Good afternoon. In accordance with sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act as nineteen ninety has amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment hearings are conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer or phone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the committee. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. With respect to hearing procedure, I would call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the applicant or agent may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first, and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will end the, mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Okay, Mr. Secretary Treasurer, do we have any, uh... defer, oh, we have deferrals, I know that. We don't have any...
Madam Chair, do you, did you, sorry, I must have missed, I might have missed it. Did you ask if there was any conflicts at a two P M?
No, that would be my first. Does anyone have any conflicts this afternoon? Uh, Mr. Marziani?
Do you, Madam Chair? I have a conflict in the four P M agenda, item number nineteen, which I...
Item nineteen, and the reason for the conflict?
I know the applicant.
All right, and I have a conflict with item twenty-three, one fourteen Palm Drive, as I know one of the residents that's opposing the application.
And we can, we can touch upon that again at the four o'clock?
Yeah.
So we know, because not all members, public members will be in the chambers at four o'clock to hear the conflict?
Okay.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I might have a conflict for fifteen, fifteen Heathbridge Road Park. I know the name, but I don't know, you know, I know the name.
All right, so we'll put that down as a, yeah, as a conflict.
Okay.
Better to, better to declare a conflict.
Okay, that's fine.
Be caught. All right, and I guess we will start with our deferrals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two deferrals at a two P M time slot. The first one is night, item number twelve, fifty-eight hundred Young Street.
Okay, do we have the applicant?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Correct. My name is Mona Alshari. I'm a senior planner at Bowsheaves Incorporated, and we're located at three Church Street in the city of Toronto. We're just requesting a deferral from the committee today as we're adding a variance with respect to parking. We've been coordinating with city staff, including transportation, and we missed mailing out the additional variance in the public notice, so we would have to come back to committee with the additional variance.
All right, thank you. We do have, uh, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No? We have a neighbor, I believe they're virtual.
Madam Chair, she's unmuted.
Okay. It's the person listed at twenty-eight Fairchild? Hello, anyone there? Oh.
She hasn't accepted the, the request to unmute.
Sorry, she, she doesn't want to speak?
She, she hasn't accepted the request unmute. We, we request unmute, but she hasn't accepted the request.
Madam Chair, the, the online speaker needs to accept the request to unmute.
I see, okay. Are we able to phone them, or just? Thank you? Oh, it's helpful. It's, uh, Henry Mao, is that who we're trying to reach? Okay. If you can hear us, you need to accept the permission to speak. We can't hear you.
She accepted, he accepted the, the request.
Sorry?
Hello?
Here. She's not going to speak? Oh, they are, okay, hello?
Sorry, I don't have any question.
Oh, you just, you just wanted to hear about it?
Yeah, just want to hear.
Okay, well, the applicant has asked for a deferral of the application, so they can, they need to add an additional variance and liaise with staff to see if there's anything else they need to fix for their application. So it's not going to be heard today. It will come at a later time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, um, I guess we can take it into committee then. Mr. Marziani?
So you, Madam Chair, um, I'd like to make a motion to defer this application as applicant requested to include an additional, an additional variance.
All right, and secondarily, Mr. Fazeli, all in favor of the deferral? That is approved. Your application has been deferred.
Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your day.
Okay. All right, Mr. Secretary Treasurer, we have another deferral.
Madam Chair, we have one more in a two P M time slot for two twenty-six Olive Avenue.
Is the applicant here or online? Thinking online?
He's online, Madam Chair.
All right.
Ben Kowski, three zero one Kiwatin Avenue.
Sorry, can, can you repeat that?
Jonathan Ben Kowski, three zero one Kiwatin Avenue.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, in consultation with planning, we made significant changes to the proposal. Um, I did drop off some letters indicating that, but I, I believe there's just a little bit too much community, um, objections to this. I, I'd like to defer, circle back with the community so they could review the revised proposal, because I'm not sure if they've had a chance to review that based upon their objections.
All right, and you changed these recently?
We did it a week and a half ago, but it was following the public notice going out.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, any questions, the applicant? No? All right, I take it we have a, a number of residents in the chamber here regarding this application. So, the applicant has requested a deferral, as you just heard, to, um, I guess they've changed their plans. I'm not sure whether you've seen the revised plans, but, um, they've asked for a deferral so that they can meet with the community, as they've indicated, and they, um, or at least you all would have notice of what they're proposing to do before it came back to committee. So, um, normally, we would ask if the residents have any concerns with the deferral, and if you maybe have a representative who can speak on, on their behalf and just indicate whether you have concerns with the deferral. We're not considering the application at all today, it would just be the deferral. So if you have a spokesperson, that would be great. Yep, you can come down to the podium, please, and start with your name and address, please. And just check that the microphone's on, is, don't think so.
Testing, one, two, three.
That's better, thank you.
Madam Chair, committee members, thank you very much for hearing our concern. We're here.
Sorry, sir, can you just start with your name and address?
My name's Greg Wong. I live at two ten Olive Avenue.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and committee members, we, the residents of Olive Avenue and the surrounding area, are here today to voice our strong opposition to the overdevelopment at two-two-six Olive Avenue. We object today to the request for the last-minute deferral for several reasons. First of all, as you can see, there are many speaker here today, over thirty people who have spent countless hours preparing for today's presentation. They should not be denied their voice to be heard today. Second, I know we don't have a lot of time, but I can tell you great stories of how much effort that people in this room has put forward to be here today to present their objection. Young Chris has spent hours at night getting ready for today's meeting. I know Veronica, last night I saw her pacing up and down the street, she's concerned about this development. I, I know Lee, and Sue, and Joanne, Arpin, and Arman, and many, many more, who have taken time from their work and the day they like to be here to present to you, committee member, the reason for ab, abduction. There are blood, sweat, and tears invested in this file, and we want to be heard today, not to be delayed for another month or more. Many of the speak, many of the neighbor here have spent the last five to six weeks, we have met almost every week in the last week because of all the variances, changes by the developer, that we have met almost every single night. And I can tell you by talking to my neighbors that this has been created tremendous mental stress to a lot of them. This is of serious concern to them, and they do not want to continue on for another two months. As you probably seen in the submission presented to you today, there have been over two-hundred-and-sixty-plus resident on Olive Avenue and the below their area who object to this development. You have received over ninety letters of objections from us, and there are numerous people here today who say, no, this is not something that we want in our committee. But the developer has made changes, but none of the changes address any of our concern. He has not reached out to talk to any of us, but most of all, it is our, in our presentation today that none of the minor changes he made fundamentally address some of the key issues. I'm not sure if I'm allowed, Mr., Madam Chair, to speak about summary of some of the key issues, but in our opinion, the proposal today cannot be cured by another delay. That, these changes that he's presenting are not minor changes. These are major variances that he's asking for. It fails all four tests of the Planning Act. I'm not a planner, but I have learned a lot of the little things the last four, five, four, five weeks. We all went up a big learning curve to be here today to present to you our concern, and we are asking that we reject the referral and let our voices be heard today. Thank you.
Please, please refrain from clapping, that's not appropriate in this situation. So thank you, thank you for your comments. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Or, sorry, the, the resident, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, okay, so we understand your concerns of why you don't want it deferred. I think that we, uh, can hear from the applicant as to why he thinks it should. We've already heard why. I just want to make it clear that this application, I mean, I don't want any confusion, but you understand that the multiplex and the garden suite are permitted uses. We are not considering whether they're permitted or not. They are permitted on the properties. That's by the city of Toronto zoning. Um, so I know it's a big change for the neighborhood, and I know you're against it, but I just want to make that clear, that, that even if it comes, if we are to defer it, it will come back. We will all have benefit of the revised plans to see if there's any change to what is being proposed, and then it will be considered. So, um, at this point, I think, does anyone want to hear from the applicant again, or no, or questions? No? All right, um, we can take it into committee? Yeah? Mr. Bartolo?
Yeah, just for the applicant. To be honest, given the sheer amount of people who are here and the time they take in to be here, I don't want to drag this on unnecessarily, but what is the applicant changing that we can't hear today?
That we, sorry?
That, that would be inappropriate for us to hear, that would require a deferral. Like, what is the nature of the change that's so significant that needs a deferral?
Well, we can ask the applicant.
Yeah, that's what...
All right, so let's get out of committee, and we'll go back to the applicant. Um, could we have the applicant back to address what is, what are the, what's the substance of the changes that you feel are going to be beneficial?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to note, I, I did drop off letters and didn't hear back from any of the neighbors, as well as the architect also walked the street over the weekend to speak to them. Um, in terms of the substantive changes, we have drastically increased the rear yard landscaping. We have drastic, we have also reduced lock coverage. We have removed building length. We have removed building depth. We have moved the garden suite by about three feet or port nine meters away from the rear property line, um, and we are also going to be providing the required bicycle parking. So in terms of the, of the changes, we eliminated three variances in its entirety, sorry, we've eliminated three variances in its entirety, and we have altered significantly four of the variances. Um, Madam Chair, I did not hear back from any of the neighbors when I dropped anything off in their mailboxes, so I, my, my opportunity to try to consult with them was not met. Um, but again, Madam Chair, I think it's appropriate to engage them, um, with these changes, because again, building length, building depth have been removed, as well as a drastic increase of rear yard landscaping, as well as that rear yard setback to the garden suite.
Okay, um, a question for you. Did you consider having, hosting a community meeting for people to come out and see the plans and make their comments, or you just dropped letters off?
You know, Madam Chair, I dropped letters off that asked individuals to call me. I, I didn't hear back from anybody. So it was kind of hard to, to do that, um, again, if, if nobody's responding.
All right, does, uh, please, 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 it's not your time to speak now, okay? We, we don't, we're not going to debate the, whether you got a letter or not at this point. Um, is, um, does anyone have any question? Please, sir?
He's claiming he dropped letters off.
That's up to the committee to decide whether he did or not, okay?
Are you, Madam Chair?
We understand that, you know, some people were notified, some people were not. That, that's clear, and a deferral would help in that, because then we could, um, ensure that everybody is notified. Go ahead, Mr. Bartolo.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Ben Kowski, the changes that, uh, you're referencing here, are they in line with the six recommended changes in the staff report?
They are, correct.
All right, so, do we want to, are we ready to take this into committee, or is there some? Sir, do you want to come back down to the podium?
Madam Chair, committee member, if it's okay, can I add, uh, Chris Lee to, to speak, to address some of the technical changes, so that we can have both sides heard today? Because some of the changes he has made, it's just very minor, and he has not addressed all the major stuff that is our concern.
I understand. I think, I honestly think from reading the letters that have been received, that the concern is over the concept of the multiplex and the garden suite on the property, and the impacts with traffic and, um, intensity, density, that sort of thing. I, I understand that, but today, we're just debating the deferral. We're not, um, considering the actual application.
And, Madam Chair, and I understand that, but the gentleman on the other end of the phone?
Applicant?
The applicant made comments regarding the changes that he is presenting to you, and we just want to address his comment about the changes not being any substantial, and, and basically, by deferring this, we're not addressing any of the major issues, and it won't get addressed by delaying it for another two months, because the opposition from us is not about intensification. We understand that the city has rules, and the city had gone forward with the development of four plexes. We are knowledgeable of the law that is presented in front of us. What we want to address specifically are the application for variance, and that application for variance, in our observation, in the research that we, we've done, is not minor. And therefore, by delaying this process for another month or two, it has not cured the problem that we face. And if due respect, I would like to introduce Mr. Chris, Chris Lee, who can talk a little bit about some of the concerns, so that we have a chance to speak on, on some of the comments made by the applicant.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to caution that it may not be appropriate to address the changes now. The plans have not been circulated publicly. This is not the place or the time to address a change plan if it has not been posted publicly and been posted publicly for the required number of times.
That's my concern as well. Yeah, I, I don't, I feel like we're, we're going to hear bits and pieces. I haven't seen the revised plans. I don't know what the changes are. Have you, but I will ask a question.
Sure.
Have you seen the community planning report from the planning department?
We have met many nights, and we have read all the report that is posted online. So we're not expert, but in our own interpretation, and this is why I ask that you give permission for Mr. Lee to step forward, is that he's, he's more familiar with the stuff, but it is in our opinion that not being expert planners or developers and so on, is that in our review of all the documents online, that the minor changes that he has addressed does not address the major variance that he's requesting.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. I just...
Thank you.
It's fruitful at this point, because we haven't seen the revised plans, so we don't even know what the changes are.
What?
So, Madam Chair, I'm just going to say again, presenting evidence on a plan that has not been publicly circulated?
Yeah.
Does not benefit everyone in the crowd. Committee, committee does not have the power now to comment a rule on a plan that has changed significantly, that has not had a public review.
But the applicant is asking for deferral on a plan he hasn't presented.
That's why...
So...
That deferral is being considered right now.
So we're asking that...
Sorry, I just want to say something.
Please, go ahead.
To everyone in the crowd, please respect this forum. This is a tribunal, very similar to a court of law. A chair needs to be able to speak when she can. Calling out from the crowds is not appropriate. We understand that this is a very, um, this is a project as, that has started with a lot of public interest, and we understand that, and we understand emotions are high, but we just want to make sure we're operating in a very sort of level-headed way at this point. I just want to make sure that's clear.
I, uh, yes, it's very clear, and, but I, I recognize that everybody here is very engaged in, in, in this, uh, presentation, and what we're asking for today, and I said in my comment, please listen to Mr. Lee, let him say a few word, and listen to the committee. I don't think you have seen this big of a turnout for a long time.
We have, actually, um, but, uh, I just don't think it's fruitful at this point to hear from, from your committee there. Again, as the Secretary Treasurer said, the plans have not been circulated, the revised there. Again, as the Secretary Treasurer said, the plans have not been circulated, the revised plans publicly. And there can be a lot of misinformation. We're dealing with very detailed information, measurements and that sort of thing. So I think we have heard that you're against the deferral, that you want people to be able to speak today. We will take that into consideration in our comments. But we will now stop the interaction and we will take it into committee to make it.
Can I, sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair, can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure that he, the applicant, my apologies, I'm learning the process. The applicant made comments that he has addressed some of the issues. The point that we are addressing is those issues are not going to be solved by delaying this meeting. All he's going to do, he is not.
That will be up to us to do.
I understand, I understand. But I'm trying to make our view that, in, in our opinion, that any delay that he's asking for, which will cause a lot of hardship on all these residents coming back up and meeting for the next six, two, two months or so on. Fundamentally, the three-story, the, it, it, the 13-bedroom parking lot and all those issues. The major variances that have not been addressed and he is not making any of those changes. And the presentation that he has submitted was submitted, I think, four or five days ago. And therefore, if he's going to make any further changes, he is not addressing the major variance that he's asking for.
Okay, and now he has heard from you and he's going to have to take that into consideration. If we are to defer this and he comes back again, he's going to have to have in mind all the comments that, or all the issues you've raised.
Right.
But again, I just have to emphasize, a multiplex and a garden suite are permitted. There isn't a variance for that on this property. So if, if the community thinks that there's, that there's a problem, there's you, it isn't there. It's, it's permitted by the zoning bylaw. So we will take your comments into consideration and we will, you'll hear us discussing in, in committee, okay?
I appreciate your committees listening and I hope the committee will look at the people in the room and listen to the committees as well.
And thank you to the community for organizing yourselves and having one spokesperson. We appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, maybe, maybe you can just say a couple of quick words to the applicant, because of the YouTube stream, there's no cameras on the audience. Just perhaps remind the applicant that there are likely 30 members of the, of the community around here.
Thirty people in.
If not, if not more, just so that the gravity of the situation and their passionate concerns for the neighborhood is well understood.
And there are a number of people online as well, not just in the audience today, so we will.
Yeah, because it's, it's hard to ignore the, the effort that is made by the community.
Yeah, all right. Let's take this into committee. Discussion regarding the deferral. Ms. Martin?
I just want to say that I think we owe it to the applicant. It looks like to me that he's made significant, or he's made an attempt to, you know, reduce his variances. And I think we owe it to him to defer, to allow him to, you know, let, make the public aware of the new variances and the changes to the plans and discuss it fully prior to coming back.
Thank you. And also, I think that giving people time to look into what these variances are and what we've said about, you know, looking into the City of Toronto planning policies and see what has been approved by the city and speaking to the planner possibly who's assigned to this file, but, and particularly looking at the report from Community Planning, which doesn't have an objection. They did have objection to certain of the variances, but the applicant has made those changes. So I think the benefit of, of deferral is just giving people more time to understand the issues, perhaps. I know it's a bit of a rush process when you receive the notice in between that time and the hearing date. So it gives you a bit more time to look into it and understand what the issues are and get down to the nitty gritty. Personally, anyway. Does anyone else have a comment? Or a motion?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I appreciate the comments that colleagues shared. The comments that the neighbors shared and the applicant as well. I agree with you in terms of what's the purpose of this deferral? That the purpose of this deferral would provide appropriate time and opportunity for the community engagement. So therefore, I support this request for deferral. I forward the motion for defer the application. I request the applicant to have consider the comments that the spokesperson from the neighbors shared with us into the consideration, make the community engagement. And it's, it's a great opportunity for both parties basically to go over the new changes or revised plans or anything that is coming along. For this part, I forward a motion for the, defer this request, the application.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second, or Ms. Martin? All in favor of the deferral request? That is four in favor and opposed. Mr. Bartolo is opposed. So that motion carries. The application has been deferred. But Mr. Binkowski, I strongly recommend that you try to engage with the community, not just drop letters in their door. Maybe convene a public meeting of some sort, that you can have the plans available, let people ask questions and you know, there is a very large group of people in the chamber today. They're obviously very concerned with this application in their neighborhood and there's various people online as well.
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so you understand, we have deferred the application for today. It will come back at some point. It will be recirculated and we cannot mandate that the applicant hold a meeting, but we've strongly suggested that they do that and hopefully they will, I mean, it's in their best interest to try to appease the residents. So anyway, hopefully it will work out. Sorry, you can't ask questions now. No, you can ask staff if you have a question. Not for a deferral. Yeah. Next item. Where are we, unfortunately? Okay, so that's been deferred. So we go back to. Where are we? Thank you. Thank you for that. Item 13, 241 Red Path Avenue. Just give me a minute to catch. All right, 241 Red Path Avenue. This is an application to increase the GFA encroachments inside yards, building height and number of stories, reduce the number of parking spaces and required amenity space. In this application, we have variances for gross floor area, height of a building, number of stories, encroachment of a pergola, encroachment of a planter, amenity space, amount of outdoor amenity space, number of parking spaces per dwelling unit and height of mechanical units above the maximum height. On file, we have a survey, plans, cover letters, two cover letters, servicing capacity study, wind study, shadow study, a presentation, a community planning report, a transportation services memo, Metrolinks memo and late correspondence from councillor Chernos. We have our applicant with us.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of committee. My name is Michael Goldberg. I'm a principal at Goldberg Group and I have a presentation if you want to hear it.
All right, and your address, Mr. Goldberg?
Goldberg Group, 2098 Avenue Road, Toronto M5M 4A8.
Thank you. Do we want a presentation? Sorry? Why am I? Sorry, just, sorry, I'm just checking. All right, we don't have. Okay, yes. Mr. Goldberg, could you just provide maybe a brief presentation on the key issues here? Or sort of the rationale behind the changes?
Sure. Thank you. So you could see in the top for the presentation, that is what the building will look like. The next page, which is the aerial photo, is the neighborhood within which this exists, the Young Eglinton area. It's in the northwest quadrant. You can see where the subject site is located. The planning map that's on the screen right now shows that it's, you know, within walking distance of two major transit stations. Being the, both the LRT when it opens, but of course at Young and Eglinton. There's a lot of information here. There's, we're also in the center at Young and Eglinton and we're within the Red Path Park Street Loop, which has a suggested height range in the secondary plan of 35 to 50 stories. So you could see we're at the north part, but we're not at the eastern part. We're not at the eastern edge. If you go to the next pay of the, of the Park Street Loop, which is outlined in that green dashed line. The next page, those are all tall buildings in this neighborhood. Now, they've been built, approved and proposed. Those were, those are what the three different colors represent over at least the last two decades. This application was settled with City Council in July of 22. Basically, in the middle of COVID, since that time, I, I think we all know that significant changes happen not only to the economy and the ability to bring housing to the market, which is a significant change and is motivating a lot of developers to seek a bit more height and density, but also the policy changes. Bill 185, Bill 23, Bill 17, the city's housing pledge to bring on more housing and 285,000 houses, to be precise, as a target, six years from now, 2031. So there's a strong, there's a strong policy thrust to bring on more housing. This application in increasing the, the height of the tower, it doesn't change anything else but the middle floors of the tower, all the great things that were achieved on the ground plane, the massing of the tower, the massing of the, of the podium area remain unchanged. We did a lot of consultation with city planning before the application went in. That's why so many studies were filed. They asked to review the shadows, the functional servicing, the transportation, the wind, the tree declaration. We filed all that. So we had about two meetings before we actually filed and then we had meetings afterwards. And what's very telling, I'd say, committee, is that in the memorandum from city staff, they quite in a, in a, in a concise sort of way, but in a comprehensive way, go through each of the variances and they're not asking or recommending any change. They are accepting the application, because while there are a number of variances that the area, the, the, the application brings rise to, it doesn't result in any major change. It's five stories more, it's 53 units more. There's a change to the mechanical penthouse, which you saw in the rendering on the first page of the, of the presentation. It's going to be there anyway. It's going to be 43 stories up in the sky and really the difference will be almost imperceptible. There's no shadow implications or shadow impacts on any or undesirable shadow impacts. And quite frankly, in the last three to four years, heights have increased in the area generally for all the reasons I've stated. So I can go through, if you wish, the individual variances, but I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to say that both city staff and ourselves went through this from a section 41, sub one of the, of the Planning Act, in terms of the four tests that you, you folks have to consider. The official plan, the zoning bylaw, whether it's minor and whether it's appropriate. The councillor in her, 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 her last paragraph basically sums up what her comments are. And quite frankly, we don't think it's significant change. There's nothing untransparent about the process that we're in right now. We're in a public process. What's very telling about this process is no one else has written in and I don't believe anyone else is asking to speak. I may be wrong about the asking to speak part, but I know that nobody else has written in. And, and you could see here, in terms of the zoning schedule, on the right-hand side, that is the only change to the entire schedule. So all the very fine-grained details about the ground plane, the base building, the size of the tower in terms of its, you know, tower floor plate, it all remains identical to what was originally proposed. And for all those reasons, members of committee, I am satisfied that section 45 one of the Planning Act, all four tests have been appropriately addressed and I would commend that to you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Marzagliari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I just wanted to ask if the applicant is okay with those conditions by the, the planning report?
Yes, they're all conventional and we are supportive of the conditions.
All right, thank you.
All right, nothing further. Let's take this into committee. Mr. Bartolo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, in reviewing the application and looking at the local context and the submission made here by the, by the applicant, I'm inclined to, to agree with the applicant. I think the addition of the density in an area that has a lot of existing infrastructure and and it's certainly in keeping with the, the nature of the neighborhood there. I don't have any problems with this application. Therefore, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application, subject to the conditions noted in the May 27 recommendation section of the staff report attached here too.
Thank you. Do we have a second, or Mr. Marzagliari? All in favor? That's unanimous. Your application has been approved. With conditional on this community planning staff report.
Thank you very much, members of committee.
Thank you. All right, item 14 is 454 Glen Park Avenue. This is an application to permit interior alterations to convert a semi-detached family dwelling into a triplex. The variances are for east side yard setback, area of a dwelling unit, number of required parking spaces. On file, we have survey, plans and a late presentation. We have our applicant. Hello? Yes, hello? Name and address, please? Through you, Madam Chair, we need a few more minutes to find the person.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Asa Lee. I'm with Excel Architecture and Modular Design. We're at 3300 Highway 7, Vaughan, Ontario.
All right, thank you. And before we begin, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
No.
All right, thank you. We do have a neighbor who wishes to speak, so if you could give us a brief presentation?
Sure. Presentation file, yes. So it's really for three minor items that we are requesting. First, which is the minimum required side setback. We are not changing anything to the existing building. We are not changing anything to the existing building, and we're doing only interior alterations. So the setback is kind of what is already existing, and we're not changing. And according to, this is only an issue because it is under the former North York zoning bylaw. If it were to be as per current bylaw of five sixty-nine, twenty thirteen, it would only be required to have zero-point-nine meters for a semi-detached house or even a triplex. So we see this as a minor item. And then the second would be the area of required area for each dwelling unit. Again, similarly, in the existing zoning bylaw, there are no such minimum dwelling unit size requirements. And also, in terms of the two units that you see, we do provide code-compliant spaces with some being even larger than what it needs to be required. So we, we believe that having minimum dwelling unit sizes are more irrelevant. And then lastly, would be the parking requirements. Again, in the current zoning bylaw for other areas of the city, majority, there are no resident parking required. And even for any of these single-family two, fourplexes, there are no parking spaces at all required, but we are still providing two spaces. And also, it is very located very closely to Dufferin Street, which does have TTC access, and it's only like two-hundred-and-fifty-meter walk to the nearest bus stop. So it is a transit-oriented area. We believe that these three are fairly minor to be provided.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No? All right, let's hear from the neighbor. Are they in the audience or are we online? Sorry, you might not have it. I've got a notation. Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, the neighbor Angela Ceslock was supposed to be online, but we do not see him or her right.
Okay. I don't think we got any, we didn't get any letters of objection on this, did we? I don't think so. All right, so they're not available or online. Okay, are we, I guess we'll just take this into committee then. Any comments?
Through you, Madam Chair. If there are no comments, I'm okay to make a motion.
Yeah.
All right. So I think, yes. I forward a motion for approval of this application. I don't see any conditions. The applicant explained about the variance number one, which is the existing condition, actually. So I think it satisfies the four tests. That is my motion.
Thank you. And second, Mr. Bartolo? All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. The application has been approved.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Chair and Committee.
You're welcome. All right. Fifteen? Coincidentally, is fifteen Heathbridge Park.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sorry. Just let me read the application. This is for a new detached dwelling. We have variances for lot coverage, building length, building depth, FSI, and rear yard setback. On file, we have survey plans, revised plans, June third, twenty-twenty-five, applicant's revised list of variances, arborist report, applicant's photographs, a community planning report, urban forestry memo, and three form letters of support. Okay, now we have our applicant online. Please go ahead and state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Kinga Yakubovska, and I'm representing owners of the property located at fifteen Heathbridge Park.
Okay, thank you. First of all, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
No, only the changes that we provided to the original submitted application.
In the revised?
In the revised plans and revised list of variances.
Okay, but the community planning report indicates that modifications are being made to some of the variances?
Yes.
All right, do, let's go to the public meeting notice, which is up on the screen, and go through each one, and you can just tell us what the changes are.
Okay, so regarding permitted lot coverage, we proposed forty percent instead of forty-four-point-twenty-six.
Okay, one sec. Can we just start at the beginning? Any changes to variance one?
Yes, that's the various number one. It's maximum lot coverage. Permitted lot coverage is thirty-five percent. We originally proposed forty-four-point-twenty-six. After revision and consultation with planning department, we improved this variance to forty percent.
Four-zero.
Four-zero.
Okay, thank you. Variance two?
Variance two. The proposed building, the proposed building length is eighteen-point-thirty-four meters after the revision. In original letter, there is twenty-point-seventeen, when seventeen meters is required. So we improved building length from twenty-point-seventeen meter to eighteen-point-thirty-four.
All right, thank you. And variance three?
Variance three was completely eliminated. The, the rare patio and extension of the basement was increased, the size, the size was increased, and this variance does not apply.
Okay. Variance four?
Variance four is remained unchanged, and we still apply for zero-point-sixty-two FSI.
Okay, and variance five?
And variance five. We improved this variance from five-point-forty-two rare setback to seven-point-twenty-five meter, where seven-point-sixty-two meter is required.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. We do have some neighbors in attendance, so if you could give us a brief presentation of your application.
Hello?
Yes, to the residents, we're just, we're just letting the applicant make a presentation first, and then you'll have a chance to speak, okay? So just take a seat. Yeah.
So, so after consultation with planning department, we revised our proposal and reduced the number of variances, and we improved two of them, and one remained the same. Regarding lot coverage, we proposing forty percent, where, where the bylaw permits thirty-five percent. I would like to note that the existing house with the existing rare great patio occupies right now, right now, almost eighty, forty-eight percent of the lot, where thirty-nine percent is a footprint of the existing house. In addition, we, our like new house, we significantly proposed larger side setbacks compared to existing structure. Exterior side yard to be increased from one-point-forty-two meter to three-zero-seven, and the interior side yard adjacent to property number sixteen will be increased from zero-point-sixty-nine to one-point-thirty-five meter. I believe that the proposed design will improve the overall condition and organization of the lot. Regarding building length, we proposing eighteen-point-thirty-four meter, where seventeen, seventeen meter is permitted. But this measurement is taken to the rare basement extension with patio above. The patio is less than one point, one and a half feet above grade and is open, and the actual enclosed mass of the building, measured to the exterior wall of the first and second floor, is sixteen-point-eighty-two meters. So like without that basement extension, we, we basically meet that requirement. As I said, we eliminated the variance related to building depth. Floor space index, we propose zero-point-sixty-two, while zero-point-six is permitted. And here I can add that, like, living space, like GFA itself, it's exactly zero-point-six. The additional zero-point-zero-two comes from the portion of the, of the garage that we could not exclude from the GFA calculation. And regarding rare setback, after like revision of the patio and basement extension, our proposed patio is right now seven-point-twenty-five meter, while seven-point-sixty-two is required. And also, I would like to add that, that the patio is less than one and a half foot above the grade, and it's open. And the distance to the main wall of the, of the main and second floor is actually eight-point-seven-five meter. I would like to add that, that the wood deck or patio or a similar size of even larger patio or deck or structure, but without the basement underneath, could have been built without any variances. However, the owners wanted to bring as much light as possible into the basement so that the windows would not be hidden underneath a deck or patio. And finally, I would like to respond to the comments we received from Urban Forestry, as well as from neighboring residents. And I would like to confirm that the trees we initially proposed for removal, which are classified as protected, especially that front maple tree and the rear yard, one of the rear yard trees, will be preserved. We will work closely with Urban Forestry to find the best possible solution to ensure these trees are safely maintained and protected throughout the construction process. And I would also like to clarify that we are not proposing the removal of any city-owned trees. And if the arborist report included some errors in the tree numbering or classification, we will provide necessary corrections. I believe that in designing this house, we made every effort to respect the intent of the zoning bylaw, while also trying to maximize functional space, especially given the property's location, market condition, and the high costs associated with construction. Our goal was to ensure that the full potential of the lot could be used in a responsible and efficient way. We strongly believe that the requested variances are minor in nature, appropriate for the site, and will not create any negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. We appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question for the applicant? No? All right. Now we'll hear from the neighbor.
My name is Jan Decker. I live at sixteen Heathbridge Park, and I'm the neighbor of the new owners fifteen Heathbridge Park. Madam Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the committee, we are the immediate next-door neighbor of fifteen Heathbridge Park and are directly affected by the proposed development. By now, you have read my letter of objection and the two letters that withdraw their support of variances, signed by residents on number sixteen, seventeen, and fourteen, complete with forestry footnotes. Although I explained my concerned objections in my letter, I would like this opportunity to highlight some of the points again. First, the increased concrete footprint. The increased concrete footprint includes the house, the patio, and the driveway, and some other things. The, and the footprint and the tree removal will obstruct drainage, rainwater runoff, limit soil absorption, especially when the houses are built on clay ground. Secondly, and this is a major one, and she just referenced to it. The second is the Norway maple issue. We are opposed to the widening of the two-car garage driveway and the connecting paved walkway to the front door. The national concrete services will cut off all the nutrients of the Norway maple and will kill this beautiful tree. Note, a two-car garage is unheard of in this area. For your reference, the Norway maple issue was highlighted in detail in the Urban Forest Memorandum by David Bostock dated June sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. He said, and I quote, "removal of a healthy tree for these reasons," and he refers to the double garage and lay-down area for construction purposes, "is not supported by forest policies, and the removal would be denied regardless of the COA outcome and/or building permit insurers." "The applicants should revise the driveway and the front of the dwelling plans, e.g. stairs, patio, etc., to ensure the tree's continuous health and survival." "The urban, to the satisfaction of urban forestry." "Urban forestry recommends that the future driveway not encroach any closer to the tree than the existing driveway." Lastly, in my letter of objection, I noted two possible overlooked variances. Please provide some clarification why they are not included in this review. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the neighbor? No? All right. Thank you. We have another neighbor?
My name is Barbara Falby, and I live at ten Heathbridge Park. I would like to say that I completely agree with everything that Mr. Decker has said. And I would like to add that the changes at number fifteen proposed will affect the harmony of the street, which was planned for sixteen houses with generous side yards, vistas over other people's property and wildlife encounters. I have seen coyotes, several species of birds, and this is a migratory path that they take through the cemetery, which is to the north. One of the ones that stands out is an opossum. And they are an endangered species, but necessary for controlling ticks, the ticks which cause Lyme disease. And now with climate change, the effects of climate are being felt through the number of ticks, tick bites that are, people are experiencing. So in summing up, I'm hoping that you will consider these objections to the proposed development.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any questions? No? All right. Let's have the applicant back to address the comments made by the residents.
Madam Chair, we have one more resident online.
Oh, okay, sorry. I see that now. Go ahead. Is that Mr. Watson? Oh.
Yes, Mr. Watson. She has to accept the request.
All right. Are you someone there?
So the caller has to accept the request to unmute.
If you can hear us, you need to accept the request in order to speak, because we can't hear you right now.
His wife. He's in a meeting, so we, we don't need to speak. My husband's in a meeting, and he didn't want to speak, so I just am on listening.
Oh, you're just listening?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Let's have the applicant back then. All right. Let's have the applicant back then.
Yes, so as I said like before, we confirmed that we're not gonna propose like any longer this removal of this tree. We're gonna maintain them and make sure that they will be like preserved and in safe condition. Of course, we're gonna work with Urban Forestry to find the best possible solution. We also like planning to reduce the size of the driveway as per Urban Forestry or find other solution who can help us to to keep and maintain health condition of the maple tree at the front of the property. And also, I will add to this that entire corner of the lot, entire exterior side yard, will be like twice as big as right now and it's gonna be all landscaped. So overall, the lot will be like improved comparing to the existing condition.
Thank you. I think the one resident made a comment about the drainage as well. Do you want to just comment on that? Concern about stormwater drainage?
Oh, sorry. Okay, so I can say that we're gonna provide the weeping tiles will be provided like around the entire building as well as we're planning to add maybe permeable pavers instead of poured concrete. And again, existing building covers over almost 48% of the lot coverage. So if this condition did not like create any damages or any did not affect the neighboring, so the new construction shouldn't do it either since it's gonna be like overall smaller in size comparing to existing dwelling.
All right. Thank you. Any further comments to the applicant or questions, I mean? No? All right. Let's take this into committee then. I was just gonna say, it looks like the applicant has made efforts to comply with community planning's requests for changes to the application that are more appropriate and minor, I think, resulting in more minor variances. Generally, don't have any other concerns. I think the drainage and the forestry comment, I think, can be addressed. It can be, the driveway can be designed to minimize any impact to the tree. So I don't have any real concern.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the applicants made an effort to reduce or improve the variances that are before us. And I think the building, it does not block. It's on the north side of the house that's to the south of the subject property and will not block sun there. It's on a corner, so there's no house to the north of it. So I am going to propose that we approve this application subject to the conditions in the planning report, which they have already got revised plans and shown revised variances. And...
So the application as amended?
As amended. And I can go through them. So variance one is amended to 40%. Variance two is amended to 18.34 meters. Variance five is amended to 7.25 meters. All other variances will remain.
I think you missed variance three.
Variance three is eliminated. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
I actually didn't hear her. I wasn't sure about that. So variance three is eliminated.
And subject to the condition in the planning staff report?
Forestry condition one.
And variance, that variance two regarding maximum building length? I got that. Okay.
Yeah, it's 18.34.
No, but that it be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan attached to the report. That's what community planning recommends.
And that it be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Seconder?
I stand up.
Okay, Mr. Marziani?
I think friendly amendment that Urban Forestry condition one.
I think she said.
Oh, you mentioned, sorry.
Said what? Yes, I think.
I said forestry condition one. Is that what you said?
Yeah. Yeah, and staff has the condition of planning regarding the substantially in accordance? Okay, thank you. All right. All right. All in favor? That's unanimous? Mr. Marziani? All right. Yep. Also, that's unanimous, approved. Application has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, are we done for? Is that the end of the two? Okay. All right. We will be back at 4:00 P.M.
All right. Good afternoon. We are back for the four o'clock agenda. And just before we begin, just a reminder of the conflicts we have on the four o'clock agenda. Mr. Secretary Treasurer, we were going to just reiterate them, I think.
Yes.
I'm item 23, 114 Palm Drive, because I know one of the residents who's speaking.
Could someone take the place?
Yes, Mr. Fazelli is going to take my place. And then Ms. Martin, I think you had one. Oh, was that already at two? Okay. Okay. All right. Was there any? Sorry, I know that one of the residents who's speaking to the, not, not the owner, the one of the neighbors, yeah. And Mr. Marziani?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a conflict with item 19. I know the applicant.
19, okay. Yeah. Otherwise, I believe we're ready to start with item 17. 2901 Bayview Avenue, 630 Shepherd Avenue East. And I am on the wrong item. One minute, please. This is an application to permit residential units, oh, on mechanical floors of buildings A and B and two additional floors on building C of parcel C, I believe. Because the wording gets a bit confusing between the building numbers and the parcel numbers. The variances are for residential units on a mechanical floor, number of stories of building C, and gross floor area of parcel C, but I believe it's building C, on parcel C. On file, we have a previous decision from April 25th, '25. A survey landscape plans, plans, cover letter, arborist report, survey, tree inventory and protection plan, presentation, a revised sanitary flow memo, a wind study addendum letter, an external sanitary sewer capacity analysis, a functional servicing report, a groundwater summary report, and a late letter of support. I assume we have our applicant in front of us. Hi. Go ahead.
I need to turn it on?
Yes.
My name is Cynthia McDougall. I'm the solicitor on behalf of the applicant, which is Quadrial, the B.C. Pension Fund. What we have here, which I'm very proud-
One sec. Could you just state your address as well?
Oh, 66 Wellington Street. I think it's actually listed. M5K1E6.
It's just for the audio record.
Ah, thank you.
Great.
Thank you. The, the site, as you indicated, is the Bayview Shopping Center, the, the particular parcels, parcel C. If, I'm sure you all saw the slide deck. So if you could just pull up slide four for me, I think that would be great, and we could move through quicker. But with me while you're pulling up slide four is, is Mr. Aaron Knight, who's a senior vice president from Quadrial, as well as other folks who can answer any questions. Online is Stephanie Quast from Bowsfields, who's our land use planner. But we thought that perhaps I could do the presentation focusing on slide four and then answer any questions. With respect to the community support, this client has worked very hard with the community, and that's a very positive enthusiastic letter of support from the Bayview Village Association, which was filed on June 10th, because there's been ongoing conversations throughout, and, and we're very pleased with that relationship. With respect to the variances themselves, if you're familiar with the Bayview Shopping Center, there's actually three buildings, and they're going to be rental buildings, and they're under construction. So this isn't pie in the sky minor variances. It's actually real. The two eight-story buildings beside Bayview Muse, where you see the little orange blocks, because of the move to geothermal, there was a less need for mechanical. So there's an opportunity to create some residential rental units on that particular floor, and not as much mechanical. So that's where some additional units are being added as well. If you look at building C, it's going to 23 stories. It, there's going to be two additional stories, and the units will again be rental. The whole project is providing 5% affordable rental units, so the section 37 package is intact. And, and, and I would, and, and everything is modest. I could show you and walk through all the different slides, but I think this slide basically tells the story. And if you'd like more detail, I can go into it, but if I could perhaps hear from you to know if you'd like me to flip through all the slides.
I don't think we need to see all the slides, and we don't have any residents in attendance. So I think we're okay with just questions. I'll start.
Sure.
And the, the drawing shows, so you're adding residential units on the mechanical penthouse of building C as well as A and B?
Is that right?
Or there's an orange-
There, yes, there is a residential portion that's being used, yes.
So is there a variance for that? I didn't-
The, the, I don't think we needed a variance because we've increased the height, and, and we've increased the GFA, so I think it's permitted through the variances.
Really? Because generally, if you're putting residential units on a mechanical level, you'd need a variance. I mean, you're, that's why you're applying for it.
Yes, we, we do need the variance for, to permit the residential occupancy on them.
I do, I might have missed it if it's already included. Did I miss it?
Included?
Yeah. Which variance is it?
Well, it, variance one, permit residential uses on the mechanical penthouse level of buildings A, B, and C?
Oh, sorry. I think I read it as A and B originally. Okay. Never mind, that's fine. I had one other question, which I don't think you have an arch, do you have an architect rep with you? Or maybe someone else knows the answer to this?
I'd invite, I'd be the architect.
Okay. The question was, I heard you talk about the geothermal, but if you're adding residential units on the mechanical penthouse level, was a noise and vibration analysis done for that purpose?
So we, we, we do have a noise consultant that works with us to ensure that there's proper isolations on the various floors. But because the, the majority of, like, the cooling tower and everything is reduced in size, and, and then thus moved to the basement, we, we didn't have a concern for that. We also have already amenity space up on that floor, so a portion of those units will be adjacent to sort of a sympathetic use. But we'll continue to work with our, with our noise consultant on the, on the project to ensure that the separation and the, the soundproofing is appropriate.
Okay, I've just heard of people buying units on, adjacent to mechanical-
Right.
-and then having issues, so.
One of the things that I would say, just generally in, in my experience, is that because it's a rental project, there's actually more care taken because you have to deal with the tenants as opposed to condo projects. And I've actually heard that in the industry, and I hate to say that because I don't want to bash condo developers.
No, I've heard the same.
It's, it's a rental project, so the tenant has to live there. You have to have a relationship with the tenant.
All right. It's just something to, to note that it looks like you'll have space to accommodate additional insulation if it's required, but I just-
Madam Chair, can we just get the gentleman's name?
Sorry, yes, Eric. Go ahead.
Aaron Knight.
And your address?
1314th Street.
Thank you.
Tobaco.
All right. Thank you. Those are all my questions, I think. Anyone else have a question? No, I think we're okay to take this into committee. Okay. Okay, let's take it into committee. Thank you. Anyone have comments or a motion? Sorry, there's somebody online?
Yes, Madam Chair. It's from Baby Village Association. She wants, she wants to talk.
She does? Okay.
Yes.
She's the one who submitted the letter, right? Okay, go ahead. Sorry, we're out of committee.
Sure, we're completing the protocol here. My name is Victoria Jolly. I'm the chair of the Municipal and Government Affairs Committee of Baby Village Association, a residency association founded in 1957. I personally reside at 72 Forest Grove Drive. And on behalf of the Baby Village Association, we just wanted to- and on behalf of the Baby Village Association, we just wanted to confirm that we've received the minor variances, um, in respect of, uh, the application of twenty-nine oh-one Bayview Avenue outlined in the file, uh, eight zero one nine zero two five North York. We have no objection to the requested variances, and just want to acknowledge that the applicant's continued engagement with our community is, uh, evident. Baby Village Association appreciates, uh, the applicant's demonstrated commitment to quality development, most recently addressing our members at our annual general meeting held on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth. The level of engagement and this kind of support, um, has been, uh, key to enhancing the comfort that they're willing to work to retain and maintain the character of our neighborhood. We further wish to state that the professional manner, um, and, you know, and how they've addressed the development to, uh, put more rental units, uh, than purpose-built condo units is a welcomed asset to Baby Village, and it contributes to a more inclusive and sustainable residential fabric. So I was registered as a speaker. I don't want to break protocol, but I just wanted to make sure that, uh, our community had the opportunity to present. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, now we'll take this into committee. Mr. Marziani?
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, if my, if we don't have any comment, I can make a motion.
Go ahead.
Um, I think it's a very good application, just adding, uh, some rental units as what our city needs. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve, and I don't see any condition.
All right, seconder, Mr. Fazelli? All in favor? That is unanimous. The application's been approved. Thank you. All right, item eighteen, fifty Cardiff Road. My mouse is out of control here.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Uh, hold on one sec, please. Um, this is an application to construct a new dwelling. One moment. Uh, we have variances for front yard landscaping, fronts, front yard soft landscaping, and south side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, an arborist report, urban forestry memo, Metrolinks comments, a letter of concern from forty-eight Cardiff Road, and a late letter of concern from fifty-two Cardiff Road. Do we have our, now, go ahead, applicant?
Thank you. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm, I'm the owner of fifty Cardiff, Benham, I'm a gus semi. I reside at fifty Cardiff, uh, currently. Um, uh, so, yeah, as you know, I'm asking for three minor variances, uh, to construct my home. Um, when designing this home, I, we, we really made best efforts to reduce any variances as much as possible. Uh, so we believe this is, uh, very minor, and, and they maintain the general purpose of the zoning. Um, with regards to the landscaping variance, uh, we're committed to implementing effective drainage solutions, including proper grading and retention measures. Uh, additionally, we plan to divert drainage to the front and backyard to mitigate any impact on neighbors. Uh, the proposed plans, uh, will still provide adequate landscaping to manage water runoff. And reviewing the committee's decision notices in the past for other properties, such as, for example, one-twenty-eight Banff, uh, they were approved from seventy-five percent to forty-eight percent for the soft landscaping. Thirty-nine Cardiff across the street was approved to sixty-seven percent, so very much in line with what we're asking. Uh, regarding the south side yard setback, the variance is, is also minor, uh, will not impede access to my neighbor at forty-eight Cardiff Road. The neighbor's home is currently, um, predominantly nine and a half feet away from the property line, um, so almost twelve feet of space between the two homes. And in areas where he has a shed and storage, it's about five and a half feet, uh, for a total of seven and a half feet of space. Um, and this is after the proposed dwelling is constructed. Uh, this is plenty of room to access the backyard. It is also one of the largest spaces between the homes on this street. Just on our small street, we've had five side, side setback variances approved in the past. Fourteen and thirty-seven Cardiff, uh, were approved for point four-five meter setbacks. Um, I'm asking for point six-two. So again, I think eleven inches of, is, is fairly minor, just in general. We, again, to summarize these, maintain the intent of the zoning bylaw and are, um, so supported by local precedents. Um, and, and additionally, we, we are committed to addressing neighbor concerns through collaboration, and, uh, hope that, uh, you guys will approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No? All right, uh, let's hear from the neighbors. Is anyone in person? Thank you. Please, uh, start with your name and address, and just make sure the microphone's on. There's a red. Yep, it's on. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Darren Nowakowski. So I'm at forty-eight Cardiff Road, right next door, directly south of fifty. Okay, so I understand that, uh, there's a suggestion that these are minor variances. I would suggest, however, that on my side, which is the, uh, south, which is the north side of my house, south side of his house, there are, there are several objects that are there that have been there since I bought the house, since before I bought the house fifteen years ago, and that I use on a daily basis, including the shed and a box that I use that I put my recycling garbage and wet waste in. If you actually look at the box and the amount of space between that box and the proposed variance, it's significantly less than seven or five feet, as suggested. It's actually, it's actually a, a closer to four, and a standard recycling box in the city is over three, and, uh, for the size that I have. I would also suggest that in the winter, when there's snow, uh, it narrows that space even further. If you look at the box itself, which, as I said, predates my ownership of the house, and I've used daily, so I would consider it part of my rite of passage, they, uh, if you open it, the door of it would actually hit their house, because it's, it swings outwards, okay? So this is not of, this is not such, so much a minor variance as an actual, uh, impediment to my being able to use my recycling garbage and, um, wet waste. It's also, it would also, uh, narrow the passage for things like my lawnmower, like I'd mentioned, and also, uh, I have a shed with bicycles, which would narrow that as well. I really need this, because I don't have any way to get, um, from my front yard to backyard on the other side of the house. It's completely blocked off, and so I actually need that space. It's, it's absolutely necessary. I do want to mention that without that extra foot that the neighbor wants to take as an easement on my side, this is going to be, even without that, this will by far be the largest house on the block, like, it's not even close. So, does he really need that extra foot, so I can't get my garbage to the cor- corner? Or can we, can we actually make this a reasonable proposition for both of us? So having said that, I do have one other comment, which is around the swimming pool, which is somewhat uncharacteristic for our area. Uh, nobody has one on our street, that's for certain, and, and even within, uh, proximity of our street. I think it's because of the ravine system and, and all the mature trees. I'd like to, uh, call, I'd like to ask a question based on the memorandum that was issued, uh, from Urban Forestry on, uh, June the fifth, which I downloaded based on this property. Um, under T P P R recommendations, Urban Forestry requests a deferral of the committee adjustment application to fully address the impacts to a bylaw-protected tree or trees. And under point five, it says, "Urban Forestry, T P P R, requests denial of the committee adjustment application due to impacts to bylaw-protected trees." So my, my question around that, um, relates to the overlap between some of the bylaw-protected trees and the intended swimming pool, uh, for the tree protection zones. Uh, you, you know, the intended swimming pool would almost certainly interfere with the root systems of some extremely mature trees, like many decades old. And, um, as I'd mentioned, is somewhat uncharacteristic of our area because of the ravines, mature trees, and underwater river systems that are in our neighborhood. So that's more of a question than a comment, and I'd like, I, I would defer to the wisdom of the, the, um, of, uh, the committee here to maybe clarify that. Is that the reason why Urban Forestry is recommending a deferral or a denial of this application? And I would also like to, just to reiterate, I'd like to say, uh, that if I don't, if, if we get an easement on my side, I'm going to have serious problems, particularly in the winter, with access to my recycling and garbage and such, because it's, the positioning of the box, which you could see sticks out a little bit, and has been there for probably about twenty years, um, makes it so that it's actually quite narrow to pass through that area. So, the, those are my two, those are my two questions.
Thank you. Uh, we'll let the applicant address that when we're finished with listening to other residents. Oh, you have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just looking at the plan, the plan here, and I'm just wondering, is, is there any other, it looks like there could be some other locations for you to locate your garbage storage box. Um, I'm wondering if you could, and then my second question for you is, are, I, I don't think it's an easement. I think it's a property line, is it not?
Um, so, I'm sorry, I'm not a, I, I, uh-
Yeah.
I'm not a lawyer, but I, I'm just trying to help.
I think it's the applicant's property line.
Okay.
And if you're, um, if you're, if you were actually pushing your lawnmower and accessing, um, on his property, then I'm just asking if that was the, if that's what you were doing. Were you sort of straddling the property line to get your lawnmower back there?
Well, I, it, right now, I'm, I believe that I'm, my lawnmower is very small, so it's only about this big. I think if there's an easement, I'd probably be a lot closer to his property than I am now. I, I'm-
Uh, there's no, I don't believe there's an easement unless-
No, I mean, uh, I'm talking about the requested one. But, look, I honestly don't know exactly where, I, I don't know if I can answer that question specifically. I don't know if I'm currently doing that, but I, it may be the case.
Well, you can see it on the plan, right?
Yeah, I can see the-
You can see where your box is.
Yep.
And then you can see the dotted line, which is the property line?
Yeah.
And actually, your, your doors that open should probably not be spanning over his property line and hitting his, his-
Well, they're currently not hitting anything. They might be if he, if he moves his ass over.
But they still probably shouldn't be going over the property line, right?
Well, I, I would love it if that, that were the case. Uh, I, I mean, I've been using this for, for a considerable amount of time. It's, it prevents raccoons and other pests from getting at my stuff. Uh, I can't put it, I can't really put it elsewhere, because I have, uh, water pipes that I use, and I'd have to relocate those. Like, if you look at the actual spaces, there are, there's, there's no other real, there's no other linear space that's that size and shape that can fit those boxes that's along that side of the house, right?
I just see that in dead, but I don't know what's there, right? It doesn't show anything. You might have, you might have-
Yes, this isn't-
Air conditioner, you might have something there.
No, it's not an air conditioner. This isn't indicating where the plumbing is. It's not indicating other, other items, so.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. No, I'm, I'm happy to, it's, answer that, but, I, I mean, real, realistically, that's the only place I can, that's the only place I can have that much linear space to put that box. So either I don't have one, or I can't put my recycling, I don't, I don't have a reasonable place to put it and pass through. Okay, so.
I think the point is that your lawn, your, I mean, unless you've got some sort of, you know, arrangement with your neighbor, you have to be able to get your lawnmower up your side of your property, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I certainly have to be able to do that. Would, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? No? All right, we will hear from another neighbor.
Hello?
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 Yes, can you hear us?
Not really. You're kind of quiet.
Sorry, I'll try to up the volume. Can you hear us? Hello?
Sorry?
Sorry, can you hear us, or, no?
I'm not answering. I can't hear. Okay, sorry, try it again.
I'm, sorry, I'm, it looks like I'm having some technical difficulties. Can you, you can't hear us, can you? Okay.
Well, you're getting better.
Get, I'm getting better? Does this sound better?
That's excellent. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just have to talk to the mic.
Now you're blaring.
Okay, great. Uh, sorry, uh, we bought the property on, uh, on the back, uh, on Fairfield. Uh, with regards to the pool, I just want to make sure-
Your name, please?
Oh, first name Jim, surname Jim Bazis, D J A M B A Z I S. We're at sixty-four Fairfield Road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, we just want to make sure that the pool, uh, is recessed, not from our wall, which is, the fence there is no longer existing, but from the actual property line that's there. That's, that's our concern, that it goes back from the property line one point two meters as opposed from our wall.
Okay, we'll let the applicant address that. Thank you.
And, uh, I know, um, my wife has some comments as well.
Could I make, sorry, my name is Susan. I just want to, I'm, have some concerns about the water runoff. Um, I know that the applicant is making a larger home, a larger footprint. Uh, there's landscape being removed. There's a pool coming in. So I'm concerned of all this soft landscaping that's going to be removed, which is going to increase the runoff. Um, I'm concerned about basement issues. Are we going to have flooding? Um, there's underwater rivers. There's a plug sewer on our property, apparently, that-
Sewer.
That my husband discovered. We didn't even know it was there. Uh, when it rains, there, there is excessive water that, the area is sloped, so there's excessive water. So I'm just concerned that with this change, uh, will it be impacting my property, and will I have issues with, uh, water runoff? And will I have basement issues because of this new build? Like, what is being done to ensure that the properties close to this are not being impacted by the, um, new runoff that's going to happen? Because that's a serious concern.
All right, we will let the applicant address that when they come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we have another neighbor? Two neighbors?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm Barbara Sheehan, and I live at fifty-two Cardiff Road, Toronto, M four P two P two. And I had, uh, submitted just some overall comments on the application, and I have spoken to, to Ben, my neighbor, um, and really, my, my overall comments relate to water and drainage, and as Jim and Susan, um, neighbors on Fairfield just alluded to, um, there are underground rivers, uh, the pool will displace, um, earth that up until now has absorbed water. Uh, I have spoken to the applicant, my neighbor Ben, about this, so he's aware of my concerns. Really, I, I, I know that only number one on my, um, letter, uh, has to do with, um, is specifically under consideration by the Committee of Adjustment, the variance on soft, uh, landscaping. I also spoke to him about the drainage from the roof. Um, it's not material right now, but with a larger home and a bigger footprint, larger roof, and, uh, in his opening remarks, Ben did, um, address both of those. So, uh, the, you know, overall, it's water. Um, there's a lot of underground rivers. There's a lot of flooding. There are some folks on neighboring streets, Banff and Broadway, who do have pools, and there are issues, um, with flooding and basements flooding. Um, so, really, I just wanted to let you know my concerns overall, given that the city has identified water issues as, um, you know, requiring considerable outlays of funds to date, and also in the, the future. So I wanted to make sure that you, you understood it wasn't a frivolous, um, objection to having a pool, but sincere concerns, giving the, given the, um, the slope of Cardiff downhill, and that my yard will be impacted. I also had a general question on where the hydro pole will be relocated. I appreciate that this isn't necessarily a Committee of Adjustment, um, um, issue, but I wanted to raise that.
All right, we'll see if the applicant can address that when he comes back on. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we have one more neighbor online. All right, I think we have one more neighbor online. Forty-six Cardiff? No?
Madam Chair, we conduct him, he's not going to speak.
Okay, he's just listening, all right, fine. Okay, let's get the applicant back online to address the comments that have been raised by the residents. Now, we heard from Jim. Yeah. Um, do we have our, Ben? Ben, um, are you there?
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting myself. Um, yeah, I just, I just kind of wanted to, thanks, everyone. I just want to lead with, um, the fact that, look, I, I plan to live here a very long time. We've already lived, uh, cohabitated together for, for, for some time. And, and really just will, will, will be very cognizant of, of, of collaborating with you guys to make sure everyone's happy. Um, with regards to forty-eight Cardiff, uh, look, I, you know, Darren has, has been using that side and, and I have had no issues with him, basically, you know, trespassing, going on the property line to, to move his, his garbage. And, and I won't have any issues going forward with that, uh, truthfully. And, and so I think, again, this, he, he will continue to use that, that, you know, bit of my property to, 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 to move, move stuff around. Uh, and I don't really think this variance makes a big difference. If, I, I think, I think Carol mentioned, uh, that, you know, you sort of addressed what I would have said, which is that if the door to the shed opens and hits the, the wall, he'd be impeaching on, on the property. Um, and then, and then with regards to the pool in the backyard, I don't believe there's any variances or anything that's, that's, you know, above, beyond zoning. Uh, so there's no variances here to be discussed on, on that regard. But, again, I, I am committed to maintaining, I, I love all the landscaping, the trees, the big trees, all that stuff. And, and I want to maintain all of that. And, and, um, yeah, so, uh, and also build something that is, that is going to be, uh, that's, that's not going to, that's going to have proper, um, drainage and, and water, uh, deal with the water well. And then, yeah, I, I think that's it. I, again, I'm, I'm going to collaborate with everybody to make sure everyone's happy. That's the intent.
Okay, thank you. Um, there was a question, I think, from one of the residents about how far the pool is set back from the property line at the rear. Do you know that number?
Uh, let me check. So that's 1.22 meters from the property line.
Okay, thank you. Um, and do you know where the hydro pole will be? The last comment?
I, I've reached out to Toronto Hydro. I don't know, you know, they, they sort of ask you to, they're going to redesign it and, and move it. My ma, I imagine it'll just be a few feet to the, to the south. Um, basically in front of where the tree is now, just, just so it's not in, in the middle of the driveway. Um, but can't fully comment because, because I don't know, honestly.
Okay, and then I have one question regarding the side yard setback, the variance that you have. Did you consider shifting the house a little to the, I'm not sure which way it is, to the right? Like, centering the house on the property as opposed to you, you know, you're closer to the one property line than the other? Was there a reason for that?
Well, um, J, one side, we're not asking for a setback. And, and this, because this site already has quite a bit of space, we thought that as, asking for the setback on this side makes more sense because there's actually less space on, on the right side. And I generally use, I personally use the right side to access my backyard. And so, just thought, you know, preserving a bit of space there. But again, I think there's ample space on, on the south side, um, which is why we, we asked for that eleven inches on that side.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marzieri?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a quick question from, uh, the applicant. Um, if you're to approve this application, are you okay to include, uh, permeable pavers for the driveway portion of the front yard?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
That's the, that's, that's the plan anyways.
Yeah, because he wasn't included in the drawings, I just, I'm wondering.
Yeah.
All right, any further questions for the applicant? No? All right, let's, uh, take this into committee for decision.
If, if nobody has any comments, I, um, would like to put forward a motion to approve this application. I think it meets the four tests. And, uh, I'd like to approve it with, uh, condition, forestry condition number three.
And the permeable paving that was mentioned in the front.
And also to install permeable paving over the proposed driveway.
All right. Seconded?
Seconded.
Mr. Marzieri seconds that, all in favor? That is unanimous. The application has been approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, the next application is nineteen fifty-seven Linton Boulevard. And this is an application for a new four-unit multiplex building. The variances are for height and east side yard setback. On file, we have plans,
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Is this where Mr. Marzieri needs to step out?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you. All right, I'll just continue. On file, we have plans, presentation material, community planning report, forestry memo, nine letters of objection and a petition with twenty-eight people listed, but some of those are covered in the individual letters of objection. I believe that is it for on file. And we have our applicant with us in the chamber today.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Ida Evangelista, on behalf of the owner of fifty-seven Linton.
Is the microphone on, Ms. Evangelista? You project well. Oh, okay, just checking.
It's just not high enough.
No. You're too tall for the microphone. Okay, go ahead.
I'm here representing the owners of this application. We are seeking approval for a three-story multiplex development in North Toronto. The city now permits multiplexes up to four residential units in all neighborhood designated areas as of right. This follows the expanding housing options in neighborhoods initiative, which aims to gently intensify residential areas and increase housing supply while maintaining neighborhood character, which I submit that this home does have many characteristics of homes in the immediate area of new and older. This proposed fourplex is intended to be a multi-generational home, allowing the owners' parents and family members, some of who are attending school nearby, to live together while maintaining independent living space. It's a thoughtful design that supports both family cohesion and functional independence. In preparation for this application, I delivered information packages to neighboring properties on Linton, up to number sixty-nine, and, um, the eight homes directly behind on Craighurst. Of those, the only resident at number ninety-eight Craighurst contacted me and their concerns about fencing were promptly addressed. That's why I was surprised to see several letters of opposition. Many, many were raising concerns I could have clarified had they reached out. Nevertheless, parking was a recurring concern, particularly regarding the nearby church. While I understand the frustrations, I respectfully note that our application should not be penalized for existing issues unrelated to our site. If you can put up, uh, page six of my submission. We are proposing four underground parking spaces which exceed current requirements. Multiplexes are not required to provide parking under current bylaws. We have undergone significant effort and cost to ensure these spaces are underground, minimizing any visual or functional disruption to the neighborhood. With extra consideration, adding space adjacent to the driveway for a car to wait should one be exiting or entering for that matter. These underground spaces will also house the garbage storage, which addresses another common concern in the letters of opposition. Now, I'll go to the variances. Our height variance, we are requesting, and if we can go to page four. There we go. We are requesting a modest variance of point three-five meters beyond the permitted eleven meters, as shown in the photo, as you can see in front of you, in our submission. This is caused by a central roof ridge, which is set back from the front facade and will be indiscernible from the street. However, if you are at the front of the house and you're looking at that front roof ridge, that is a height of ten point six-six meters. Bless you. Our side yard setbacks, now if we can go to page five. Our front yard setbacks, we are proposing one point two meter setbacks on both the east and the west side, only zero point three meters less than what is required. These setbacks still maintain proper light, airflow, drainage, and, most importantly, accessibility, and are consistent with existing homes and redevelopment in the area. Our building length and depth variance. The requested variance stemmed from the design of the underground parking, not the building itself. The actual building length is eighteen point two-nine meters, which complies with zoning for both length and depth. The third story, I may add that the third story is stepped back and is at a length of fifteen point six-six meters, helping to reduce the visual amassing and impact. Our front yard landscaping, we do have a front yard landscaping. We fall short about five square meters, which is due to the slightly wider driveway. Now, these, the owners have given very careful consideration for safe vehicle entry and exit, as I previously had mentioned. We also, uh, have, and will incorporate permeable interlock pavers. If you see, it's, we do have a walkway around the, the front stairs, um, to access the units, which we will introduce permeable interlock paving, which will increase pervious surface area and support stormwater management. So in closing, I just want to say that I understand, um, the, I have read through the letters of opposition and I understand their concerns and their frustrations. But in closing, I would like to say that this is a family-oriented, thoughtfully designed development in a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood with excellent access to transit, to schools, and to parks. Toronto is prioritizing gentle intensification, particularly in transit-oriented areas. We believe this application is appropriate, desirable, and in keeping with the official plan and zoning bylaw. And it does meet the four tests under the Planning Act. And we respectfully request your support in this application, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? I have a question about the underground garage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I just want, uh, what is going to go on the finished grade?
Grass.
Grass?
Yes.
Just pure grass?
It will be, it will be a mix of, yes. So, how it will be laid out, because it will be able to retain, retain the rainwater. So, it will be, um, soil and then grass on top.
I did notice that it's only, I think it's two feet, six hundred millimeters, I think, from top of slab of the garage to the, you're going to have about two feet of soil, is that right?
And, and we are working with engineers, and as you know, we will have to be working with the engineer department at the City of Toronto. And, um, the owners do have their own, um, private engineering firm to best address because there, there will be, um, a, a base layer underneath with the soil and then with the grass on top. So that will be considered as amenity space for those that live in,
Am I wrong? Do you have two feet or not even two feet? Like, what is the depth from top of slab of the garage to the finished grade?
We have approximately, I will tell you, if you just bear with me for one second. We have approximately about, um, yeah, two and a half feet.
Okay. So, the garage, does it, does the walls of the garage, does it go right out to the property line? I can't tell from this drawing.
The, the walls of, well, we are inside the,
Sorry to interrupt. If you, if you reference drawing A three point one, the section there, you can see the extent of the garage and you can see the soil cover in the section.
And that is why, um, planning would like to tie the, uh, cross-sections to the decision?
Yeah, so the, the soil depth is one foot four inches.
Which is a little over one, oh, what's the depth?
One foot four.
One point four.
Okay, so it's not quite two. Yeah. Hmm.
One point four meters, four point five feet.
One point four meters?
No, one foot four inches.
Yeah.
Oh, one point four, sorry, my glasses, I can't see.
And then, just to follow up on Ms. Martin's question, the setback of the parking garage to the property line?
So the setback from the parking garage to the property line, I will tell you, because we do have stairs along the side,
Right.
to access the underground garage.
But the stairs are inside the,
Inside the garage.
Yeah, they're inside, yeah.
And of course, my apologies. Uh, here we are. So, we, we do, uh, but, we do a but the, um, property line in, in some areas.
Is there a plan that shows that? I, that's what I was, I don't know where,
Yeah. Seppi sees that drawing.
I don't have it in show at the moment. It's here, the talking book's here.
Yeah.
Can't see the outline of the parking garage.
Did they?
So, there's, there's no site plan that shows that.
No.
No, there's no site plan that shows it, vocal meal.
But wouldn't the, under, wouldn't the parking garage need a setback? From the side? Well, it's part of the, if the counting building length and depth are including the garage, the sepp,
If you could just bear with us for one moment, we're just, because it doesn't, it doesn't quite articulate the exact measurement on the plans.
If, if you go to site plan, one point one, SP one point one, and you reference the stairs that are coming into the backyard,
Mm-hmm.
then you scroll down one page, the basement level, correction, two pages to the basement level.
I know where.
You can kind of tell.
I mean,
Because you can reference the stairs again, so you can see where the top of the stair is underneath. And you can see where the top of the stair is in relation to the property line. So they probably, looks like they have around three feet to the property line, plus or minus.
Yeah, because the stairs are inside the parking garage, right?
The stairs are inside the parking garage, correct.
No, but if you look at, um,
No, but if you look at.
It does? Doesn't to me. Oh, now I'm seeing it. I think I was on one point one, SP one point one. Well, this is the entire. Yeah.
Yeah, there, any.
So, yeah.
Is there a drawing you want to refer us to?
Unfortunately, it's not, it's not showing, drawing unfortunately. It's not, it's not clear. It's not, yeah, it's not a variance.
Not a variance, but.
And we have to, because of the construction and the, just to make sure that, you know, it's fireproofed and whatnot, so we are very, very close abutting the property line. But again, it, it is not a variance.
But there is a, sorry.
Is there not a side yard variance?
What I, if you are three feet back, let's say, right?
Right.
You can put a row of some sort of screen there potentially, and some greenery in that backyard.
Oh, there will be.
Well, you can't not, in, in one, one, if you've got only that much, you've got that much soil, you can maybe put in, you can't put anything substantial in.
Well, I, I believe what the intent is apart from the grass and we are rebuilding the new fence behind, I believe the intent is, so we have, there are various trees that the root system don't go down, they go sideways, more like the columnar, right?
I know for a fact that even if it's a spreading root system, not like a taproot system, it won't survive in one, one foot of soil.
Yeah, maybe an ornamental tree. I have a willow tree that we just can't get rid of.
You might get a bonsai, right?
That's, that, that depth of soil and it just won't go away.
Well, maybe a tree of heaven, yeah.
It's resilient.
Yeah.
No, there's an east side yard variance.
Parking garage, the extent of the parking garage. Oh, I know, I know, it's just, it's just because we're concerned about storm drainage. I don't think, I mean, obviously as it goes through building permit and you have an engineer, they're going to have to look at where water goes and some sort of drainage system for this because.
Well, our in-house, we've, we've gone through the process already and engineering didn't have any concerns with it, so, and we've also hired our own engineer team and they are quite satisfied that we will be able to maintain all the water on our own property. And like I said, once we go through that building permit stage, it will then even be clearly identified with engineering reports.
Is there a question? No, it's, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, let's hear from the neighbor. Hello?
Yes, hi.
Hi, you can hear me, that's great. Thank you very much, first of all, for the opportunity to speak with you today, I've been listening to much of what's been going on and lots of interesting projects, sure.
And can we start with your name and address, please?
Absolutely. My name is Blair Cowper Smith and I live at sixty seven, sixty two.
Sorry, we're losing you, can you speak maybe a little closer to the microphone?
My name is Blair Cowper Smith and I live at sixty two Litten Boulevard, can you hear that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm getting a little bit closer to the computer here, that should help.
Okay.
You just signal me when I'm not making enough noise.
Okay.
So I just have four or five points I'd like to make and I know the first one will seem a little bit odd, but I'll explain why. I'm requesting a deferral on this and the reason I'm requesting a deferral is I think some discussion with the many, many people that have written letters would be very helpful to solving a lot of questions in many people's minds. And I did place a phone call, left a message on this previously, did not hear back. That's not being critical, it's just a fact. So here are the reasons for why I think a deferral would be helpful. I think some of the things we've been talking about and some others I'm going to identify might be regarded as being at odds with the neighborhood. This is an interesting building, but it's very different from what you're going to see on Litten Boulevard if you drive up Litten Boulevard, obviously as to the mass and as to the looks of structure. And those kinds of things, obviously neighbors are very interested in, simply because they have to look at the house or the building for what could be many years after it is built. We've had good experience with dealing with new houses going up on Litten Boulevard, in fact, one directly across from where I live. And we met with the owner immediately and certainly right away to ask for an opportunity to chat. The owner was well represented with lots of professionals, we met with them as well. And we solved a number of issues that the neighbors had with the height of the house because the house, and I think like many builders these days, the bigger the house, the better, you might put it that way, we're seeing very, very big houses built. And the mass of the house was simply going to make the houses next door on either side look small. And that may be the exercise of a legal prerogative, but it has nothing to do with good neighbors and good relationships with neighbors. So in that case, we solved it, the height was brought down, the owner was happy, everybody's happy, and it's a beautiful house. A house being built on Alexander Boulevard behind us, we still haven't necessarily sorted a problem. But one of the things, again, that's being done, that's legal, but that impacts the neighbors is there will be a small house built in the property, consistent again with where Toronto was going on this, but it's being built right up against the fence next to the back of the house. And this is something the neighbor, in this case, is very concerned about because it will be much taller than the fence that is there and obviously if there are windows, it will look right into their backyard. So discussion can solve a lot of these problems and discussion and also I think what new neighbors moving into a neighborhood off on a very good footing with a lot of people from the day they move in, so that's being requested. I want to talk about a couple of other things in terms of the things that might get discussed, obviously the size, whether it fits in terms of design, that's obviously not going to be the case, but it might be a very beautiful structure. Height construction to the, to the property line, I make this point because we're seeing a lot of this occurring now, it seems to be, and maybe planner will comment on this, but it seems to me the city has rules in place for setbacks, but it seems like much of what gets built now is built based on the precedence of what committees of adjustments do and moving side yards seems to be a very popular thing to do. And that may be so, but I'd like to see the city spend a bit more time looking at this whole issue of side yards before they simply are cleared in many, if not virtually every application I see that goes forward these days. So we'd like to have some thought given to side yards and obviously talk right to the owner frankly about their views on side yards and why it has to be the way it is, and there may be a very convincing argument that neighbors that will be directly in this building, I'm not.
Sir, I have to interrupt you because your time is up.
Oh boy, okay, so let me, can I make one or two points in thirty seconds?
Yes.
I have an issue with privacy with the balconies, that's a big issue that has to be discussed with the neighbors as well, and I think it's in something that is, needs some discussion. Obviously as well tidiness with four units in one house, just to be practical, you've got a church next door and a school, and we all like to put out our garbage fails, but there'll be a lot of garbage fails in front of this house, so some discussion around how that'll be solved, when they'll be put out, when they'll be collected back and where they'll be kept will be very meaningful to the neighbors. So that's my suggestion, that's my request, and thanks for listening in.
Thank you very much. Any questions for that resident? Yeah, do we have anybody else? That's it? That's the only speaker? Okay, thank you. If we could hear your responses to the applicant's concerns. Yeah, did I say applicant? Sorry, days getting long, to your responses to the resident's concerns, please.
I'll make reference, my apologies, I did not receive a voicemail message because I'm quite diligent in returning my phone calls and after all, I did spend, you know, considerable amount of time putting the packages together and delivering them to neighbors along Litten and Craigers, so I most certainly would have welcomed a reach out and the opportunity to have a fulsome conversation. So in that being said, let's talk about the balconies and, and privacy. So we do have balconies at the back, the balconies that we have on the second floor and third floor are balconies that are off, they're more like an area of refuge and it's off of the bedrooms. It's not an area where, you know, large parties will be held and cavorting will be taking place, it's off of the bedroom and it's just an area for, for light and air. There is a, a deck off of the main floor and that deck is not high off of the ground, it's actually approximately point nine two meters off of the ground, so it won't really create a lot of overlook or onlook, I believe probably it'll more happen from the church onto this property or the neighboring property onto this property. As you saw from my aerial photos, you'll see that the area on the, this particular property is very heavily treed, which mitigates any privacy and overlook and onlook. And the, the garbage. So as I mentioned, the underground parking has a considerable amount of space for the bins. And again, I would like to state, this is a home, it's a multi-generational home for a family that we have separated, careful consideration has been taken on the design and the layout, on, on how this will be and that way all the family can live together, however, they're all independent from each other and have their own space. So they will be quite diligent in bringing out and pulling in the garbage bins. We've also, as I mentioned, there are areas on either side of the driveway where the bins can be placed during garbage day. And I know everyone is frustrated with parking on the street and that's why the owners have taken this considerable consideration to take the cars off the street and, and taking this extra cost, building this underground parking. The concern that I read over and over in all the letters was the parking on the street and the mention of the church and the private programs that they have with everyone that, you know, is coming and going in the area. I believe with the greatest of respect, I believe the neighbors should get together and perhaps they should reach out to the councillor's office. Or alternatively, work together with the church and try to come up with some form of amicable situation, but with respect, I don't believe, you know, I, I have to respectfully say that they have taken, you know, time, cost to put and keep the cars on their own property and off of the, off of the street. I think, did that, does that cover?
I think so, I think you've covered everything. Did you have a question? So you're building, so the, the permitted length of the end depth is nineteen meters.
Mm-hmm.
According to community planning, I guess my question for you is, how long is the actual building?
The actual building is, if we pull it up, it is my page five. It's eighteen point two nine.
Okay.
And then the third floor is fifteen point six six.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, any objection to permeable paving in the driveway?
Not at all.
Okay, I think that could help with stormwater drainage. All right, are we satisfied now? Okay, let's take this into committee. Comments or a motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Bertolo?
Comments there, Madam Chair, I think in general, it's a, it's a good supportable application. I understand the neighbor's concerns about the parking situation, this is probably one of the few multiplexes that actually solves the parking situation by providing their own underground parking. And I understand that comes with a trade off that you might not be able to have as much soil volume in the backyard as maybe you would like for tall plantings, but again, that's not a variance here before us anyways. So on balance, I think they've done a good job achieving what they need to, I'm not worried about the numerical value of the variances because the vast majority of that is underground and will never be seen, and the setbacks are, you know, in, in keeping with many of the setbacks, and I don't see it being a huge detriment. The five meters in the front yard for the landscaping, I think can be mitigated with the permeable pavers, I think it's close enough that the permeable pavers are appropriate solution for that, so on balance, I think, supportable application.
Thank you, do we have a?
I can make that a motion in two seconds.
Let's turn that into a motion.
All right, through you, Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application subject to the following conditions, that variance number one, four, and five be developed substantially in accordance with the cross section drawing submitted to community adjustment as attachment one of the June fifth staff report, and subject that the front yard driveway be constructed using permeable pavers.
And forestry?
Uh, yes.
One?
And forestry condition number one.
Thank you, do we have a second or? Mr. Fazelli? All in favor?
That's unanimous?
Your application's been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item twenty.
Seventy six Shellborne Avenue, this is to construct a three-story, single detached dwelling with an attached garage. We have variances for coverage, main pedestrian entrance above grade, number of stories, area of a platform, for the rear balcony, area of a platform for the front porch, main wall height and building height. On file, we have a survey, site plan, plans, presentation, site photos, a community planning report, and an urban forestry memo.
Madam Chair, the applicant is online, I requested him to unmute.
Okay. Okay. Hello, Mister or Miss Vasiri? You need to unmute yourself. Hello?
Adi Shakiri, three twenty-six Shepherd Avenue East.
Can you just speak up a little? We're having it's a little quiet.
Sure.
Thank you. And your address? Oh, you did say, sorry.
Three twenty-six Shepherd Avenue East, Adi Shakiri. My apology.
That's okay. Thank you. Before we begin, do you have any changes to make to the application?
No, Madam Chair, no change.
All right, thank you. We do have some neighbors who have asked to speak. I believe they're not here, right? They're online. Okay. Could you please give us a brief presentation on the application?
The straightforward application. Most important thing is that we are asking for a three-story, but that three-story is a technical three-story. The lower level is considered a story. If you go to the third or fourth page, there is a section of the building. Next page, please. Yes. So let's say if we if we were to dig the basement deeper. By about five feet or one point five meters, then that variance would be deleted. Also two other variances under number four and number five. For the balconies, we got the technically the second floor, the main floor of this building is technically second floor. And also the building height is. Only for the front portion. I can see that the planning has imposed a condition which we accept. If you go to previous page of my support material. Yeah, that that highlighted area is the only. Area of the building that has additional height. The rest of the building is just staying well within the. The height requirement. I have also submitted some evidence of the approved. Variances in close proximity and and some photographs of the houses. With the height and many stairs and everything. So this is not going to make a new precedent of any sort. That would be concluding my comments, but I'd be more than happy to answer any question. Thank you.
Questions of the panel? No? All right. Let's hear from the neighbors, please.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, Madam Chair. This is Helene Schoen Blum. I live at seventy-four Shelbourne Avenue. Right next door to seventy-six. I just have to preface my comments by saying that I am not as well prepared. As I've been listening to all the speakers because. I only found out about the specifics of this this afternoon. I. Did not receive a handout with all the information. So whatever I gathered was in the last minute. So. I hope this will be sufficient, but from what I understood. Today. The the builder would like to build three stories. I understand that he says it's it's not a complete three stories. But the. The height allowance, from what I understand, is ten meters and they're requesting ten point eight two. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh huh. So so would this in fact be? Within the allowed ten meters or will it be above the ten meters?
No, they're requesting a variance above the ten meters. For ten point eight two.
Uh huh. So so I think this will be very different from our neighboring homes on our streets. No one has three, three stories. We do have a number of new homes and none of them are three feet. And then. I just wouldn't want it to be an eyesore. I'm sure it'll be built very beautifully, but would like it to fit into to the street. And then the front porch. I'm concerned about that it's it seems to be way above what what really is allowed of four square meters. And they would like seven point eight square meters. And that too will change the whole look of the frontage. And on the side, I I don't have any papers in front of me, but the home that's there now. Their small home is already very close to the property line. So. I'm just concerned that it shouldn't be any closer than it already is. It's very, very tall. And for now, that's those really my concerns.
Okay, thank you. We'll let the applicant address them. There's one other speaker, I believe, and then we'll let the applicant address your concerns. Okay? Could we have the other person?
She's requested to unmute, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Oh, there's.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, is this Flora Platsker?
Yeah, yeah, my name is Flora Platsker and I live on seventy-eight Shelbourne Avenue.
Thank you.
Next door to the seventy-six.
Okay.
My my concern is it it, okay, one thing is the height as the former applicant addressed it. And they want to build higher, yet the the side the side property, but the size of my lot, the border of the setback. Is only one point two meters. Is it according to the bylaw? I have a question.
Okay.
The setback.
The.
What is the minimum?
We'll let the applicant address that.
Okay, no, but I want to know the bylaw.
Yes, okay. Do you have any other comments?
Yeah, the because my my the size of my property is one point eighty cent. One point eighty meters. So his and his will be only one point two meters. And it will be higher, so it will overpower the house. And there will be a lot of windows on the side, on the side of the property. I mean, the west side. And I don't know. I we are concerned. I'm concerned with that kind of build.
All right, thank you.
I would like to know the legal setback of the side property. If it's like two, three story.
There is no variance requested for side yard.
It's four foot only, one point two meters. I I saw the plan.
Mm hmm. There's no variance for that. Like they're not asking for a reduction in that.
It means it's legal for food? Not reduction. I don't I'm not speaking about reduction. I've been, I mean, it's too narrow the passage. From my. Property, the side lot property.
We will let the applicant address that for you, okay?
Okay, and then I want to ask you. Okay.
Is that all your comments?
Yes, the high the the setback of the side property.
Okay.
Too narrow compared to mine. Yeah. And the height, of course, or the height too.
Yes, okay.
Proportional, yeah.
Okay, we will bring the applicant back now to address your comment.
Yes.
All right, Mister Shakiri?
Yes, if I can have my support material be displayed, please. The second page, I guess. Yes, that second page. No, this is for, okay, so that second page, please, the next page, next page. Yeah, that's you see that that red line delineates the existing house that we are demolishing. You can see. That the side yards are significantly larger now. And also the house is now set back to work better with the front of the other two neighbors. So now, you know, it's interesting. Look, look at number seventy-eight. The lady just just commenting on this number seventy-eight to the right, to the left side. Look at the size of the front porch and comparing to what we've proposed here. And also both of these houses, I don't have a photograph of number seventy-four. But if we just scroll down to go to the picture I presented from number seventy-eight. You can see that. Next, perhaps. Yeah, so, okay, this this according to the bylaw today, this is a three-story. Because more than half of the basement is above grade. And if you count the steps on this house is eleven steps, including the ones to the driveway. That main entrance door of this house is directly at the main floor. We have a sunken entrance and the the number of steps we're proposing here is nine. So that elevation of the main pedestrian entrance is not contributing to the to the height of the building. Let's say we could, we could have had a few more steps inside. And removed a few of the step steps from outside to comply without changing the building height. Well, we did it for architectural reasons without basically impacting the building height. Once again, the building height that we're posing is only for that. Front portion and only because proportionally we want to make like a pleasant looking. Looking front elevation. Without that, this house will look like a like a flat roof. I don't think if anybody benefits from it, but we tried our best to. Decrease the the mass on the on the rest of the building. That's why the planning department consented to that. Having the condition to tie to the to the side elevation. But the most important comment I want to make here is that most of these houses, and you can scroll all these photos that have submitted from. Close neighborhood, close proximity. You see how many steps in front and all of these houses by today's bylaw, they are. Classified as a three-story because more than half of the basement is above grade. It's not hard to see on these photos. You can scroll the pages down to see all other. You see like so many steps going up, large porches, same type of architecture roofs. And and some of these houses are actually higher than what we're proposing proposing here because. Back at the time, they measured the height to the to the midpoint of the roof. Now we are measuring to top of the roof. Perhaps we might, perhaps we wouldn't even need that variance. If if we wanted to comply to the previous pilot. All in all, I think I think we reviewed this carefully. We we looked at the proximate neighborhood and the context. What we're creating is not is not going to be an eyesore. And we we chose our variances very, very carefully. I I hope I answered all the comments, but if I left any of them unanswered, please point it out to me. I will answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant at this point? No? All right, let's take it into committee.
Yes, through Madam Chair, thank you. If there are no comments, I'm okay to make a motion. Thanks for the applicant for explaining. I also acknowledge the concerns from neighbors. That being said, I believe to me the application's supportive. For that reason, I feel I think it satisfies the four tests. So I'd like to forward a motion to approve the application with the following conditions. Variance number seven, be developed substantially in accordance with the west elevation drawing submitted to community of adjustment and attaches. Attach as attachment one to the staff report dated on, let me see, June fifth. And then there is condition of a forestry. I'd like to add that to forestry number one.
Thank you. Seconder? Mister Marzagliari?
All right, all in favor? That is unanimous. The application has been approved.
Thanks so much.
A quick break? Are we okay? Sorry? Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, five minute break. Not ten, five.
Five, yes.
I have my own list. Oops. All right, we are back. We are on item twenty-one, eight Geddes Court. This is an application to construct a, construct a second-story addition to the existing dwelling. There are three variances for north side yard setback, building length and front side, front yard setback. On file, we have a previous decision from 2014, a survey, plans, owner correspondence, site photos, and community planning comments. Through we have our applicant.
You do, I'm, I'm online.
All right, please state your name and address.
So my name is Steven Stein, I am, my, my address is Eight Geddes Court, this is my, my residence, my home. So Eight Geddes Court, North York, M three H two W eight.
All right, I don't think we need a presentation on this. So unless there's something you want to point out, we can just go into committee and make a decision.
That works for me.
All right, I, I take it the, some of these variances, well, the, the first variance is because the dwelling is existing, is that correct?
All these variances are, are related to it, it being on a pie-shaped lot. And as the second story is coming to be aligned with the first story, it's, it's all the technical measurements of where the closest to the, the side yard is measured from has moved.
All right.
Yeah, so for example, well, okay, yeah, that's.
I think it's okay, it's okay. We don't need any detail. We'll just take this into committee, I think. All right. Someone?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Marzighari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I think it's fairly straightforward application. The variances are mainly about existing, so I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with no condition.
All right, and do we have a seconder? Mr. Bartolo? All in favor? That is unanimous, your application has been approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, then we have item twenty-two, fifty Findley Boulevard. This is an application for a new two-story dwelling. We have variances for height of main walls, building length, building depth, height on top of an entrance to an ancillary building or structure, coverage, and east side yard setback, west side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, revised plans, an arborist report, a cover letter, presentation material, community planning report, forestry memo, three letters of support from forty-five, forty-six, and fifty-two Findley Boulevard, and two late letters of support from fifty-one Findley Boulevard and nineteen Embro Drive. We have our applicant.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Alexander Overholt from Contempo Studio, eleven forty, the Queen's Way, speaking on behalf of this application.
All right, thank you. Any changes to make to the application?
No changes to the application, just to clarify the air. The only reason why there was revised plans issued is we just wanted to update our survey or our survey underlay to showcase the presence of more trees than the previous set of plans.
All right. And does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No? Yep, go ahead, Mr. Bartolo.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Just in reference to the staff report, the dwelling set, the west yard setback being limited for the first eight-point-six-five meters, does that have any impact on the updated drawings or anything that you submitted here?
Uh, no impact at all.
Okay, so you're, if that was imposed, it would not affect your plans?
That's correct, yes, the eight-point-six setback, I mean, the, the length is just refers to the additional setback required for the facilitation of the garage, we're not concerned.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a neighbor listed, are they wishing to speak? Because I have them listed as one of the letters of support.
Madam Chair is not available, so you're not going to speak.
They're not?
No.
Okay. All right, well, they might be listening and, but I have them indicated as one of the letters of support from forty-five Findley Boulevard, so I think we're okay. Any further questions for the agent? Ms. Martin?
I'm just looking at the backyard and just, I presume you've done the math and that you meet the requirements for the softly landscaping in the backyard. It looks like an awful lot of hard landscape, but there is a significant chunk at the back and, I guess, at the side. Can you just comment on the hard landscaping on the back, in the backyard?
Yes, not a problem. Optically, it, it does look like there is a fair share of hardscape, and you are correct, there is. The required rear yard softscaping percentage equates, is needed to be fifty percent. Our proposed value is fifty-five-point-six-seven, so we, we comply by five-point-six-seven percent.
Okay, thank you then.
You're very welcome.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? No? All right, we're ready to take this into committee then? Comments or a motion?
If there's no debate, Madam Chair, I can put forward a motion.
Mr. Bartolo, go ahead.
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, through you, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application subject to condition number one in the recommendation section of the June fourth, twenty-twenty-five community planning report attached and subject to the conditions of the urban forestry memo attached.
All right, thank you. Seconder?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Marzighari? All in favor? That is carried. All right, item twenty-three, I am stepping out as I have a conflict, and Mr. Fazali will take over as chair. No, I'm not going home.
All right, thank you. So, the next item, item number twenty-three. Purpose of the application to construct a new dwelling and requested variances are as follows. Variance number one, parking space, number two, rear deck east side setback and rear canopy side yard setback for variance number three and variance number four, building length and building depth variance number five and variance number six, east side yard setback. We have on the files presentations, plans, surveys, letter of support, transportation review, and community planning report, and letter of objection, objections, three of them. So I'm just going ahead with the address, property address is one fourteen Palm Drive. All right, so do we have the applicant with us?
Excuse me, yes, you do, I'm Drew Lazlo, agent for the owner, my address is one ninety-three Row Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you very much. Before we start, have you made any changes? And could you please comment on the community planning reports and then transportation review as well?
Um, yes, I work closely with planning and as a result, I would like to eliminate variances numbers one, two, and three, please.
All right, so variance number one, variance number two, and variance number three has been eliminated, and what about the rest of the variance number four remains?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, those are all remaining.
Okay, number four and five, six remaining. Do you, are you okay with the condition that the community planning report requested? The building length and rear ground level deck is requested to develop substantially in accordance with?
Yes, of course.
You're okay with that? And then transportation review, there are some conditions, what about those conditions?
I'm fine with those as well.
Thank you so much. All right, so you have five minutes to do a presentation, we have the neighbors after you to speak about their concerns. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so just briefly, so this is for a new two-story dwelling. After removing the first three variances, we're left with, with, with the, you know, three, we're left with three variances. For all intents and purposes, variances four and five are the same. They have to do with the proposed length of the house, length and depth. And if the committee could please just keep in mind, that is measured like that twenty-two-point-five-five-meter measurement is all the way from the frontmost wall of the house all the way to the rear of the deck, the, the rearmost portion of the deck. So over four meters of this length and depth variance are technical because it's only because we're excavating under the rear deck, so they have to be included in the calculations. Variance number six just has to do with a proposed side yard setback variance. We're supposed to be one-point-eight meters, we're proposing one-point-two-two meters. And that is along the east side. And if, if you take a very quick look at the site plan that's up there, they are, the, the east side is perpendicular to all the adjacent homes. So we actually, the east side of the proposed dwelling faces the backyards of the adjacent homes to the east. So there'll be minimum impact as a result of that extra two feet or point-six meters that we're asking for for the east side yard setback. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Does anyone, any panel member have a question for the applicant? No, it seems there are none. So let's go to the neighbors. What I have on the list, one hundred and twelve Palm Avenue, Carol Taub. Do we have them online?
Mr. Chair is online, I requested him to unmute himself.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Taub. I live at one-one-two Palm Drive, directly to the east of one fourteen.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we do hear you, thank you very much. Go ahead with your five minutes.
Okay, I have a couple of main concerns. First of all, the tree survey that was done does not show the maple tree in my backyard. I have a maple tree between my house and one fourteen, and it's not shown on the tree site plan. So I don't know if that's going to make a difference. My, my next concern is that if the new building is two feet closer to my property line and presumably the trench that's being dug for that foundation will have to extend it even further, that's coming extremely close to my hedge. That hedge has been there since before nineteen eighty-five, when I moved into my house. I'm, I'm very concerned that the root system will be destroyed by the digging. Also, the proposed, the plan that was put forth shows almost five thousand square feet for the new building. Two new buildings at the other end of the street that were put up were under three, there were three thousand five hundred square feet. This new house that will be, is proposed for one fourteen Palm Drive, that is far, far bigger than any house in the neighborhood and certainly doesn't match the rest of the houses in the area. Those are my main concerns.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing.
Sure.
The height of the building. There was also another error made on that tree site plan and one other plan. It shows my house as a two-story dwelling, it is not, it is a bungalow. And that new proposed house that's being put up at almost thirty, thirty-three feet, it's going to dwarf all the houses on the street, but particularly my house right next door, which is only a bungalow.
All right, are there any other concerns or?
Those are the main ones.
Thank you, so let's move on. I, I'll ask the applicant to address them. Let's move on to the next person, the next neighbor. One hundred and fourteen Palm Avenue, do we have them online?
Yes, I can speak. My name is Edward Nicolucci, I live at one thirteen Palm, that is directly in front of the subject house.
Thank you, you can, you can start five minutes, yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, perfect, thank you, members of the committee. As I said, I live directly in front of the house. One can say that the area is pretty characterized as having substantial trees. And part of that actually is, obviously, there's a lot of landscaping in front of the house, obviously to the rear, but also to the side as well. And we have to acknowledge that this house is And we have to acknowledge that this house is actually 55 feet wide, which is actually somewhat larger than most of the homes in the area. And as I said, part of the character is, you know, mature trees and generous setbacks. In fact, if the person can go to the site plan drawing, I'd like to point out that, you know, the existing conditions, so they've indicated trees, and you can see the trees that have been indicated. One tree they failed to indicate, which is actually a substantial tree and is part of, as I say, the character of the area. And so there is a tree that actually straddles the property line, and it is exactly just to the east of the subject site, right? So on the east property line, you can see the tree, and there's no designation that it really requires a tree hoarding perimeter around it. So on the tree information declaration, they indicated that there would be no trees impacted, that is private trees as opposed to green trees or street trees. In fact, in my opinion, I guess, it would be incorrect because that tree is being impacted. And the survey indicates that the tree is about eight inches in diameter. And by, I guess, the forestry comment, the protection zone should be at least, I guess, six feet. So it's 1.8 meters. Currently, they're proposing 1.4 meters. So again, if one looks at that particular tree, maybe the person who has access can point out that tree? Maybe not? Okay, anyway, so the tree is actually proud. It is to the rear of the existing home. When the new building is built, it will actually have a greater impact on that tree. And hence, the tree will be impacted just by virtue of the fact that it's not acknowledged to have any tree protection on it. My recommendation to the committee is that the side yard setback be rejected. That is, they should maintain at least the committees, the variance for 1.8 meters. Currently, they are proposing 1.4. I believe that they should keep the 1.8 in an effort to maintain that tree that straddles the property line. And as I say, it's part of the character of the area. It's very well vegetated. In fact, my recommendation is that forestry also go out there and make sure that they make efforts to keep the trees and vegetation, as the other neighbor was saying, to maintain those trees along the east property line. Thank you.
Thank you. So you have mentioned about the forestry, and we do not have any reports about forestry because all the applications and the files are checked by forestry, basically, and they do provide reports if they have to. I'm just putting that side note. However, I will let the applicant also address your concerns. Before that, are there any questions for the neighbors from panel members? Nope, seems nothing. So let's go back to the applicant. And could you please address the concerns that the two neighbors, for the mob, the first neighbor, she had three concerns, and the last neighbor who spoke had some concerns about trees as well? So go ahead. You have five minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so as far as the trees are concerned, we get a survey done. We superimpose the trees that are shown on that survey onto our site plan. Sometimes they are accurate, like accurately depicted on the survey, and sometimes there are trees missing. We have an arborist, a certified arborist from Davy Tree Care on file on the project. We will be submitting an arborist report and any required tree permits as well. So the trees are being dealt with 100%. You know, if we have to do root exploration or whatever it takes in order to maintain the trees along and the hedges along the east side, we will do our best. Some of the roots may encroach over into where we are digging. We will have to deal with that. Any damage to any of the hedges, of course, we're going to replace them. We'll do whatever it takes as far as the trees are concerned. But like I said, an arborist is on board 100%. As far as the overall size of the house, we do comply to coverage. You know, it is a bigger lot. There's no doubt about it. It's 250 deep by the rear. The property is 70 feet wide. It's approximately 55 feet at the front. So you know, that's why the house is proportional, in my opinion, to the size of the lot. As far as the height, I think there was a comment about height. We do conform to the height. You know, we're at the maximum permitted 10 square meters, so not much to mention in that respect. And I believe those are my only comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any questions from panel members?
Questions?
Yes, please go ahead.
So I'm looking at the site plan right now, and the dwellings on either side, 116 and then, sorry, I can't, let me just, and then 112. One thing I've noticed is you didn't put the full footprint of the house on, on the adjacent houses. That's sort of something that is really important for us to see, how your house compares with footprints on either side. So you've only got part of it shown. I don't have, I don't know how far that house goes back. I can look at Google Maps, that sort of thing, yes, unless you can point me to another drawing.
If you please, if staff could put the survey up, it will be partially of benefit. It will address the depth of number 116, which matches the depth of the existing house, which we were planning on demolishing. So if you could scroll a little more towards the front, please. So you can see that house, number 116 to the west, you know, generally matches the depth of the existing house. And that is shown, if staff could, while the survey is up here, the houses, you see where it says lot number 47 to the east? That, the reason no houses are shown kind of to the east, they are so far away that, because these are the backyards, so they're, you know, minimum 50 to 60 feet away from our proposed house. That house right there and number 112, yes, that is the rear wall of the existing house. And just so staff knows, that house there is 24 meters long. So it, you know, above grade, and that does kind of encroach closer to our proposed house.
Right.
That's why the houses are not shown to the east, because they're so far away.
Fair enough, but 116, it would be nice, it would have been nice to see. I mean, you can see it now because you've got the outline of the existing house, so why didn't you show the full house? That's all.
I agree with you. That's 100% overlook, and we typically do put the full footprint on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, so we don't have no more questions. So let's go to the committee. And if there are any comments, if not, can I ask for a motion, please? Yes, Mr. Bartolo, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I'll put forward a motion. I think generally what's being asked for is supportable, especially as amended here. I understand the difference in the length as it relates to the back porch versus the kind of the principal rear wall of the building. And the side yard setback, I think, is minor and supportable. I don't see it having a severe negative impact on the neighborhood. Therefore, I'll put forward a motion to support this correction, to approve this application. Correction with the following conditions, that variances number one, two, and three be eliminated, and that the building length and rear ground level deck variance number four and five of the new drawings be developed substantially in accordance with the revised site plan drawings and ground floor drawings submitted to committee adjustment June 2, 2025, as attachments number one and number two of the staff report dated June 2, 2025.
Thank you. And would you like to add the transportation?
And subject to the conditions of the transportation memo attached.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
There's one other thing. Also, that the covered deck, that will not be enclosed.
Would you like to amend your motion and add?
Yeah, I'll accept that friendly amendment.
All right, so do I have a second for this? Should we repeat that?
Friendly amendment that the rear deck not be enclosed.
Because it's covered.
Okay, thank you. Do anyone would like to second the motion? Yes, Mr. Marziani, all in favor? Thank you. The item number 23 has been approved. Thank you so much. I'd like to ask Ms. Cassin.
Thank you.
Come back. Thank you.
All right, I believe that is the end of the agenda. And we just need, thank you to staff today, and thank you to my fellow committee members. We just need a motion to adjourn. Who wants to jump in? Ms. Martin, go ahead.
I will gladly make a motion to adjourn this session.
At 6:03 PM. Second for Mr. Fazali, all in favor, obviously. All right, that is carried. Thank you again.